Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming to today's Cuyahoga County Planning Commission Board Meeting. If we could, Annette, call the roll, please.
Mayor Burke?
Here.
Councilperson Conwell? Mayor Daley Jones? Director Dever?
Here.
Mayor Dallow?
Here.
Mayor Kurt?
Here.
Mayor Rercut?
Here.
Michael King, our councilperson Simon?
Here.
Mayor Weiss?
Here.
Mayor Weelo?
Here.
The floor.
Thanks, Annette. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Approval of the minutes from the October tenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. I believe that they're within the packet. I'm not sure if you've had an opportunity to review it, as if anyone has any comments or questions. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
A second.
Second is, any other further comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Okay, great. We'll move on to the resolutions, Mary.
Thank you. You'll hear a lot of talking from me today, unfortunately, which is, you know, nothing usual, but we have a few things for your attention. The first item is Resolution twenty-four, one-two-one-two-a. This is a resolution amending Cuyahoga County Planning Commission Resolution nine-zero-zero-two-two-eight-a. So this is something I think we talked about at one of the previous meetings, and it's something that we talked about with the Bylaws Committee, looking at contracting authority for the executive director. And so the resolution that was originally created was in nineteen ninety that limited the economic or executive director's authority to contracts that did not exceed five thousand dollars. And so at this time, we're seeking approval to increase that contracting authority from five thousand to ten thousand. And I think the bigger piece of that really is, you know, inflation. I think we calculated it's definitely over ten thousand, five thousand from nineteen ninety. And there was actually, it was not real clear in that nineteen ninety resolution as to what the five thousand was, whether it was revenues or services. And as a lot of you know, when we do our planning grant program, we reduce the cost to the community a great deal. And so sometimes the revenues are really low, but the cost, estimated cost of the project could be a hundred thousand dollars, and the community's only contributing five thousand. So we really wanted to clarify what that five thousand or what the ten thousand pertains to, and then also include additional clarification on even those items that are not necessarily a contract, but, you know, memorandum of understanding of perhaps City of Cleveland or someone else that were doing this work, to really make sure that we have timely beginnings of projects. Because what has happened in the last rounds of planning grants, we come to you with like four or five projects, and then they're all starting all at once. So our capacity is really cut immediately. So we thought if we could have more flexibility in what needs, you're down here, Councilman, what needs to come to the board and at what time. This would help us, you know, maximize the capacity. And I, and I think my big statement to all of you really is, I'm not trying to bring less to you as board members, but I always bring things to informational only, you know, across the board. But I think it's just giving us some more flexibility on that five thousand, you know, versus ten thousand limit. So that was this slide, sorry. Yeah. So I'm.
Pat, does anybody have any questions in regards to this? I just, I know that others have made some changes on the approving authority for executive director. Do we have other agencies that we can reference that have made these type of changes? I don't know.
I don't have it.
Wes, will you be part of it?
I don't know of other, offhand, I don't have other examples.
I know, what's the board of control? I know there's been some recent discussions on board of control.
The board starts at five thousand up to.
Five hundred?
Five hundred. I was gonna say two fifty. Thank you, Michael.
No problem. Mike, give you the perspective on.
Yeah, I believe, I mean, the administration has proposed, I think, raising the thresholds for the minimums to go to board of control, five thousand to ten thousand, which would be in line with that. That's still pending before council, so it hasn't been adopted yet. I actually have one question too. Oh, sorry.
Would add that the County Saw Waste District has a ten thousand dollar contracting authority as another board governed agency?
Just a point of clarification, does this apply to both expenditure and revenue generating?
So it's really for contracts of revenues of ten thousand dollars is really what it's pertaining to.
So it's only revenue generating?
It's only revenue generating. So, and I think later on in the agenda, you'll see we talk about a work plan. And so that's really kind of part of the goal, is that I continue to bring information to you on expenses. But we've never been in the habit, if we estimate a project's gonna cost fifty thousand dollars, if it goes over that, like, we don't come back and say, hey, board, like, we've expended more resources than we thought. Would you approve that additional spend? So really understanding that our budget is used for providing services to the communities. And that's what, you know, typically, I mean, up and up on what we're spending the revenues on. It does, you know, specifically on revenues of ten thousand or more.
Okay, does anyone else have any other comments there?
I would just say that, you know, in thirty, forty years, inflation obviously is a factor. And it sounds like this would be something that'd be helpful to your department with efficiency. So I will definitely be supporting this.
Mayor?
I don't have a comment on this issue, but a question on the bylaws, is that coming up?
That'll be, will come up, yeah.
Okay, fine.
Yeah.
I'm fine with.
Okay. And I think too, just to your point on inflation, I mean, it's not just the higher wages that, you know, we've paid since nineteen ninety for our professionals that do the work too. It's obviously a factor.
I'll make a motion requesting the approval of a resolution to amend Resolution nine-zero-zero-two-two-eight-a, previously adopted in February twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety, to increase the contracted authority of the executive director. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mayor Kurt. Any other further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. All right.
Good afternoon, board members. Thank you for allowing me to come speak and present on the work we've been doing on parking in the county. It's the countywide parking study from two thousand twenty-four. My name is Micah Stryker. I'm a senior planner with the County Planning Commission. I'd also like to give, recognize the efforts of Maureen Riley, planner with the Planning Commission, Sean Kidd, a former intern, as well as Jim Sonalter, our planning manager, who had a lot of, did a lot of heavy lifting for this. I was the project lead, but there was a lot of work throughout our, our, our group and our staff that pitched in. So just a little background and overview. So the purpose of this was to understand how communities kind of regulate and require parking for development in their communities. And then also determine where we, as a county planning organization, could help provide some guidance to communities to help mitigate issues with parking, right-sized parking, and then reduce negative impacts. So some background of where this project came from was as county planning has been doing some ongoing work on studying transit-oriented development in the county. And as part of that, we did a zoning analysis where we looked at the communities, the zoning in the communities in that, in those walksheds or TOD corridors. And parking was a key land use factor that impacts the ability to develop TOD. And only six point five percent of TOD walksheds met zoning criteria. And throughout that, so we realized, one, that's very important. But also, as we looked through those zoning codes, we realized it's a very complex issue. There's a lot of different things that go into parking regulations. So, so it's something that we thought we really needed to look into further. So, and as many of you know, you know, in your communities and throughout the county, this is a lot of what parking looks like, a lot of what retail development looks like in the county. So the left is Great Northern Mall. On the right is Southland in Millbrook Heights. And so you see, you know, and this was, this was common development in an area. So a lot of parking for, for maybe not necessarily a lot of buildings. So something we want to say, how can we make this better? And so, yep. So as part of that, we first needed to kind of say, well, here's how we're gonna look at it. So it was, again, we looked at twenty-nine communities that were part of the TOD study. There's a lot of communities, it was a broad mix of communities. So even though it wasn't every community in the county, we covered, you know, from Cleveland to Lakewood to Strongsville to Pepper Pike. So we've got a lot of different types of communities, a lot of different types of codes. And as, as we found out, there's a lot of different regulations throughout the county. So we reviewed thirty criteria, so we kind of looked through a few initially just to say, what are the different things that are covered? What are the different things we need to be looking for? And so we identified thirty criteria that we're gonna look at, both quantitative. So, you know, how many spaces do you need per, you know, square footage of retail or office space? But also sort of more qualitative, like, do you require landscaping? Or, you know, do you have, you know, shared parking agreement requirements or anything like that? So somewhere a little more yes, no, is it there? Somewhere a little more, let's dig, you know, deeper into what they actually cover. So, and through this, you know, we had our key takeaways and then developed best practices to kind of provide, address those areas and provide a range of options for mitigating those factors or providing updates. And so just a highlight of some of our key takeaways. Oh, okay. Not working, sorry. So, yeah, so the first major key takeaway is that existing regulations encourage parking. As you see from the photo, that's kind of what it was encouraging throughout the county. And one of the reasons is, you know, there's a little commonality between codes, between the communities. So you just get a range, but it just sort of promotes parking. And one of the, again, another reason is that the median age of these codes that we looked at is twenty-six years old, so mid-nineties. So a lot has changed. We talked about, you know, inflation changing, but also, you know, the way we shop, the types of retail experiences people are looking for. You know, Amazon was still selling books, Google's just getting started. You know, so, so a lot has changed, but a lot of these parking codes have not changed with, with those times. And so, so obviously a need for some, some just general updates to account for different tastes. Another factor, so just looking at the amount of parking required. So twenty-one communities required at least one space for two hundred and fifty square feet for the TOD. You know, at a minimum, we said, to even be considered supportive of TOD was one per three hundred square feet. Most of these communities required to one per two hundred square feet or less, or more. So, and if you think of that, you know, if you have a twelve thousand square foot retail building, you're gonna end up, you know, it's one at two hundred and fifty square feet, that's forty-eight parking spaces. So if that's the size of like a small, you know, a family dollar or a small shop, forty-eight spaces for that, it's quite a bit. And if, you know, even shifting that by, you know, fifty square feet to two hundred, which was a lot of the communities, that's another twelve spaces, I believe. So there's, there's, you know, that has a big impact, and you end up at with as much parking space as you do building. Also, forty-one percent of communities allowed parking reduction for mixed use. So obviously, mixed use is becoming much more popular and desired. And a lot of communities didn't address that. A lot of communities still said, well, we don't care if you're mixing uses that operate at different times. Or they didn't necessarily say that, but their codes got, got the point across that even if you're mixing uses that aren't necessarily operating at the same time, we still need you to have all the parking that you would ever need for those, those uses, which, again, just promotes more and more parking space. And then less than twenty-five percent of municipalities require or allowed for reductions based on demonstrated needs. So even if a use came in and said, we don't need that much parking space, the code still said, you have to provide that parking space. And then only eight communities provided parking maximums. So a lot of communities that are updating the parking are going from minimums to maximums. Because if you don't just have a minimum, that doesn't prohibit anybody from just continually adding more parking. So this is saying, you can have this much parking. Again, it's trying to eliminate those large expanses of parking. And then a lot of spaces, communities' codes, didn't really address anything other than the parking spaces. So they didn't say where the code or where the parking can be located. So only twenty-one percent said, had any regulations like, okay, it can't be between the street and the building, or it has to be behind the building, or only so much of it can be. So to kind of promote, you know, a, a street front sort of neighborhood type of affordable commercial. And then less than forty percent of communities even addressed pedestrian. So we have all this parking space, but we're not even gonna address how people walk through that space, get to the buildings. So again, a lot of issues that, that either aren't addressed or, or just aren't accounted for, or just promote parking for cars and aren't really taking into account the realities of, of the types of development communities want these days.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Does any of the criteria address disabled parking?
We, we did review to see if, if that, if it was included. Most communities had at least a, a, a reference to ADA parking standards. And again, that's also something that's a federal requirement. So even if it was initially addressed in the code, it's still something they'll have to address. But it was in there, yes, we did look for that, that criteria specifically. So, and there's a lot other takeaways and a lot of other, like I said, there's thirty criteria that we looked at and different takeaways from that that are in the analysis itself. So where does that kind of, where do we go from here? Did I lose it again? Ah, there we go. So along with all that analysis, for all of those different areas of, of criteria that we looked at, we developed best practices, kind of, we looked at a range of best practices. If you want to be like the best, you know, just eliminate parking, do this. But we also realized that, that many communities still want, still need parking. It's, or it may not be something that's a one-size-fits-all for the community or locations in the community. So we tried to give some intermediate steps. So here, here's some ways in between. So you may not necessarily be wanting to get rid of all parking, but you can limit parking by adding maximums or something like that. So giving a range of, of best practices to, to address these issues. And, and so from that, kind of some logical next steps might be pursuing, developing a model code so that communities can look at and say, we want to update our parking. Here's what we, here's a code we can take and, and address ourselves. But we're also doing a lot of zoning work lately. It's affecting our, you know, we're using it for our own projects. We're working on a mall area mixed use overlay for the Great Northern Mall in North Olmsted. So that's something I've been working on. And we've definitely been looking at these best practices, and they've been open to, you know, some real changes to their parking. It was something they identified as a real need, because as you saw, a lot of parking there. But we're also doing a TOD zoning district in South Euclid. So again, parking will be addressed there. And we're just recently are engaging with Fairview Park to do a TOD overlay. And so we'll also be looking to implement, you know, some of these takeaways in that as well. So, so definitely very important work. And we're excited to be able to help implement this and help communities in the county. So any questions?
Just wondering when, I know you're constantly working on the, on the parking study. What's the timeline? Do you think that we can present these model codes and things to the various?
So, yeah, so we've done the analysis. We have, we have the best practices in there. So, so that's up on our website and the document's available with the best practices. So if a community's looking for something in particular, for a specific issue, they could go find that. We haven't yet started on, on a model ordinance at this point, but that's something that, through a lot of our work, we're kind of getting into a lot of those with a lot of our zoning work. So that's something that could probably be pulled together fairly quickly once we're able to really look at that and get the, the time to.
So are we trying to regulate as a countywide practice?
It, it would, it would be more of an informational asset that we could, you know, say, hey, if you're looking, you know, if a community's looking to, to update their, their parking regulations, they could have a place to start from. Because a lot of times, you know, communities are like, I want to do this, but I don't know where to start. And having some model regulations, they could kind of take in and modify from those. But the county itself, we wouldn't be regulating any communities' parking.
One, one more question. Is this something that we'll present when it's completed to the mayors and managers?
It could be, yes.
We love being on their agenda, so if you want to, we encourage them to add us for this, we welcome it.
Miss Fields?
Yeah, I just had a question about the next steps. Walkability is identified, but I'm wondering about bikeability as well.
Yes, we did look at, at bike regulations, and it was similar. There's, there's different aspects that go into that, whether it's bike parking or, but a lot of times connectivity for pedestrians and bicycles are kind of go hand in hand. So, but it is definitely something that was in there.
Just gonna say, yeah, Mark, I mean, you know this all too well, going, what's happening in the city of Cleveland and reducing parking or eliminating parking minimums and thinking of transit and other things. And I think part of the transit-oriented development zoning overlay that we created also has best practices of parking in that document. And I just liken this to the single-family zoning work that we did when we looked at all those different zoning codes for residential, boiled them all down and said, okay, now here's a single-family infill code that we can go to communities and adopt locally. But, and that's a challenge. I mean, we, we obviously don't control zoning at the local level, but we want to put forth best practices that then communities can easily adopt without having to do, start from, start from scratch, so. But I think this is a really good point to bring forth to mayors and managers.
Any questions or further comments or questions for Micah?
I'll make sure we send out the link to the report to everybody after this.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Micah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Next, we've got Jennifer Carafa that is going to provide the board with a fiscal update.
Thank you, Mary. Well, good afternoon. I'm Jennifer Carafa. I'm the manager of Business Services for County Planning. And I'm here to provide to you a brief update of County Planning's finances. I last reported to you the board back in mid-June. So I wanted to share some highlights. We've been very busy this second half. And I would walk you through each of these. Okay, some highlights. All right, so staff is nearly at full capacity. While we did lose one longtime employee in August, and we haven't officially replaced her position yet, we are staffed at twenty-one FTEs, which includes two principal planners that were hired mid-year, as well as a full-time fellow that we retained this year and next, which were not originally part of our approved budget. Because of these and a couple other personnel changes, including our mid-year merit and some pending equity adjustments, County Planning was recently granted additional appropriation, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to cover salaries and benefits where a check call was projected before year end. Another financial highlight from this year is that we were awarded a six hundred thousand dollar grant for a Safe Streets for All safety project. And while this is a pass-through kind of grant and not necessarily revenue for our agency, it's important because we'll need spending authority to hire a consultant and then conduct the targeted work with them. County Planning continues to generate outside revenues. We generate those dollars through contracts and fees for services and bring those back to the County General Fund and have continued to do that. And then we have continued to administer the Healthy Urban Tree Canopy Grant Program, managing it as the fiscal agent on behalf of Department of Sustainability. So we've been doing this grant program since two thousand and nineteen, and our team has handled nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in annual reimbursement grants each program year since its inception. This year, we've actually made great strides to increase efficiencies at running this program. We invested time and resources into neighborly software. And that's helped us both with applications for us to manage review, awardees to apply, and then for their reimbursement. So it's been a great help. But neighborly is actually only active for the current year for PY5 awardees. So we're still kind of processing payments through our other mechanisms, which have been successful, which helped us build neighborly, actually. So in two thousand and twenty-four, we have actually issued over seven hundred and five thousand dollars in reimbursement payments back to awardees. Eighty-five percent of those were for program year four awardees, and they've had active contracts through the end of this year. And then we've already actually issued over fifteen percent for PY5 awardees, which runs through the end of next year. So we're doing pretty good. And generally, we issue over ninety percent of each of the program year's grant awards. I will say that there is another round of funding that County Council approved and put into our two thousand and twenty-five budget. So right now, we're in close conversations with Department of Sustainability, both their director and deputy chief on, well, what does that look like for two thousand and twenty-five? So more to come on that. Okay, in terms of our two thousand and twenty-four operating budget, which is fully funded by the County General Fund, it was approved and adopted by County Council at two million ninety-seven thousand eight hundred dollars at the end of two thousand and twenty-three, right? And as I mentioned back in June at my mid-year, based on operational expenses throughout the year, we had shifted some dollars among our accounts to better reflect where our non-labor expenses were posted and paid. So given that alignment and this additional recent appropriation of a hundred and fifty thousand granted from council, County Planning's final two thousand and twenty-four budget is nearly two point two four million dollars. Now, that a hundred and fifty thousand additional appropriation was intended to cover both salaries and benefits costs, but it did just post in full to salaries, and that's what's shown in dark blue. Combined, however, the total personnel costs still remain about ninety-seven percent of our overall operating budget. What you will note is that in the final revised budget, there are slightly fewer dollars in contracts and more within our operations accounts. Yet combined, both that yellow and the aqua-blue categories still equal the sixty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. They're just aligned differently. So how do we do?
I have a question.
Sure.
So the contracts went down?
Right. We shifted some dollars out of there.
You just shifted. Okay.
Okay, so this graph shows our two thousand and twenty-four budget broken down by each major category with four points of reference. We have our original County Council-approved budget shown in dark blue. Our revised final spending authority in light blue, which is then compared against the third quarter of two thousand and twenty-four actuals, shown in green. And then in gold, our forecasted end-of-year expenses. So I think this is clear that our personnel is our largest expense, right? And by the end of third quarter, two thousand and twenty-four, we were on track to exceed our original salaries appropriation. We were about eighty percent spent already at the end of September thirtieth. Same with total benefits, which are a direct factor of total salaries. Benefits were on track at the end of third quarter to even exceed a final revised budget appropriation. So we knew that, we were trying to act proactively, and we forecast that we will end benefit costs at the end of the year at just over half a million dollars. In our operating and other expenditures accounts, we had that original appropriation of about thirty-nine thousand. And while we had spent a little less than half of that aligned final budget by third quarter in those operational accounts, my team did anticipate a flurry of fourth-quarter activity, giving, we processed expenses like software, membership dues, things that were expiring at some point during the fourth quarter, and they needed to be renewed. So we anticipated that moved some dollars over, and were able to even make the County Fiscal Office deadline this week to process a flurry of, of payments, those remaining payments. So we're forecasting that our end-of-year non-labor expenses within operating is about forty-eight thousand dollars. And we, to Councilman Simon's point, we were able to afford some of those higher operational costs by shifting appropriation out of contracts, which was actually only originally budgeted at eight hundred and twenty-one dollars, and which was not the case, right? But, so we moved money in, and then we ended up moving money out. Ideally, it was so that we could use funds for some of that additional logo and branding work, other contractual, contractual work, perhaps the website upgrade, things that actually didn't get off the ground in full this calendar year. things that actually didn't get off the ground in full this calendar year. But at the end of the day, county planning opted to use existing appropriations from contracts and other existing accounts instead of going back to council for more appropriation mid-year. I think overall, we will end 2024 under budget, right? And that's given that Mary and her team, we've closely monitored transactions, balances, and we're proactively working within OBM, knowing that our total expenses would outpace our current appropriation. So we're planning to end at about $2.21 million. Now, county planning does continue to generate revenues. Here's a look at outside revenue collections in recent years. Charges for services, they were lower in 2020, as to be expected because of COVID. We did resume invoicing, and then we actually received some pass-through funding for TLCI projects. In 2021, that put us over $250,000 received. Brought in our highest recent deposits in 2022, and that was primarily from interdepartmental contracts with like Department of Development and Department of Public Works, right, for Lakefront, but also contracts with OPWC and a lot of other communities that we're working with. Last year, we did bring in revenue from various sources. We had survey work that took off. We had subdivision fees that we collect, lots of zoning map updates, and then those recurring contracts with OPWC, that we had total collections last year over $230,000. This year, so far, we've deposited over $212,000. And we do have outstanding third-quarter invoices that we would potentially deposit before year end. Those are still coming in. So we project that we will have collections this year to be about $220,000, which is on par with our recent four-year average of revenues received since 2020. And looking ahead, okay, our 2025 budget, which is column for the column with the colorful shading, this was originally built as part of the biennial budget, and it had a similar spread as our 2024 approved budget, which is shown in column one. One difference between '25 and that approved budget was, our '25 approved budget was built to include an average 2% cost of living increase and our mid-year merit, and then higher overall benefit costs over the '24 appropriation. However, when compared against column two, which is county planning's final revised budget, you can see that our 2025 approved budget all of a sudden is inadequate to cover both our labor and non-labor accounts. And so what I've done is I've shown in column five those percents, that there's no net increase in personnel when you compare the two years' approved budgets. You see a significant shortfall of non-labor expenses. At that funding allocation, we'd see a 72% decrease in non-labor and then an overall decline in our total budget of 1.3%. So what I've done is I think a more realistic comparison of our 2025 approved budget is against that aligned and projected 2024 budget, shown in column two. Okay, that does still show a net shortfall of 29% within our total non-labor accounts, but it does net a 1.2% increase within our total personnel accounts, and then an overall positive budget overall of 0.4%, right? So while I do think it's better when it's viewed against that benchmark, I will say I don't think it's sufficient, it's going to be sufficient for 2025. So we anticipate working again with OBM on various things throughout the year. But in early 2025, we'll have to adjust our current appropriation within the appropriate accounts so that we can align our budget where those expenses post, first things first. And then later, we will address where those projected shortfalls in our personnel budget and our overall budget are going to be, knowing where we landed this year. I think there's lots of moving parts. We will come back in early 2025 and share that with you once things kind of settle down, but I wanted to give you a sneak peek.
Comments, questions? Thanks.
I just have one comment. So when we think about the revenues, and I know we've had new board members this year, and those revenues that come in get deposited back to the general fund. So that's how that operates now. And so that is something we talked about in the past, where we thought we'd have a shortfall, and we got spending authority to hire a consultant to do a retreat the one year. And so there's times like that when if we do need spending authority on a portion of those revenues, then we've been able to do so. And we've got ideas towards the future, what it could look like on keeping some percentage of those revenues and putting them back out to the community in terms of the services that we provide. So not happening yet, but just something that we've talked about, you know, in a variety of ways. And not, you know, it's not something we publicize a lot, that those go back. But I mean, we are supported completely by the general fund. And so years ago, when we were a special revenue agency, we had to really charge more for the services so that we could offset, use those revenues to offset our costs for, as an agency, in addition to what the general fund provided. So just some history and background.
Mary? Or I'm sorry?
So just a cost-benefit analysis of dumping into the general fund and how that enhances our, right? Potential work to communities, to being hamstrung.
Right. And I think, you know, obviously, we don't want to take the revenues away from the general fund and then get less in general fund. I mean, because then it's just offsetting where we were before.
We've been talking about this for years.
Yeah.
And it's very frustrating.
So.
I'm sorry.
But I just, I appreciate council support. I mean, and OBM's been working with us, and I think as we identify these shortfalls early, it's noted early on, and then it's just trying to figure out when the right time again. Because some of these shortfalls don't happen until much later in the year. And that's why we knew come October, you know, we had to get this in front of council, that we need an appropriation before the end of the year. It's timely enough to do so. So we appreciate your support.
Mary, is there a mechanism in place to offset some of this, keep some of this money? Are you creating that? Is that what you're looking to try to create?
There's not yet. And I think the big question is, you know, what approval would be necessary for that? It would be board approval, but it also have to go before council, I would assume, to get approval for that kind of structure.
I think they would be comfortable with it, something that has a cap on it.
Right.
But has some flexibility in it.
Yeah, we've got a draft internal kind of policy we've been working on for the past several months, and it does align a little bit with the next version of our planning grants and kind of what can we do with those dollars if we were to keep some of them. And just a lot in discussion right now, but nothing official.
Okay. Any other further comments? Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. We run a, she runs a tight ship. Lean and mean. All right. So the next item is the bylaws. And this is just for discussion today. I just want to thank Wesley and Councilman Simon and Mayor Wheelo. They've been our small but mighty bylaws committee. And just to give you more context, the last, the last time the bylaws were amended were in June 2020. So obviously, things change, and there's been a lot of new resolutions and a lot of things that have happened along the way. And so today, the way the bylaws are written is that we must discuss it at a meeting prior to it being voted on. So this will be brought back in the new year. And I apologize for the mess of a version that you've got right now, but I had to be able to show you the changes. And since we printed this, you know, we, I've found some other things that need to be changed. So it's not clean, and I've just found a few like CCPCs that still exist and other things that will clean up for the revision. But really, long story short, you know this is how I go about policies and procedures, trying to clarify and really consolidate language in between so that they're really straightforward. The reason this bylaw packet is so big is we did not have an appendix before. We referred to reference documents in the last page of bylaws. We never included those ORC, county code, county ordinances in there. So those are in here now, just in writing, so that you know what they are. And we're going to have hot links in the document in the final draft. So if you want to go look out to wherever that reference is, you can click right out to the website to pull up the ORC code. But really, what we found was there was so many references to ORC or county ordinance or county code, and then we then listed the entire language of those codes or that section. And we're like, this is silly, like, we don't have to redo it, because if we're referring to that, we just can say this is where it's from, and then you go look. And so I think that'll really tighten up the ship there. The other thing is we really tried to clarify CCPC. You know, mostly now we're going by county planning, but what was very confusing in the document was CCPC referred not only to us as an agency, but it also related to you as a board. There was no distinction in some areas if I was talking, if it was talking about the board or county planning itself as an agency. So now we say CCPC is, you know, is county planning and then the county planning board. So we tried to clear that up throughout the document. So I know we've missed a couple here and there, but those were big, really big sections of it. I think we really, I think Mayor Weiss, this probably goes to your question for the executive director duties that's in here, maybe, maybe not. But it was really light on what my duties were. And the only thing we really had in the organizational meeting was selecting the chair and vice chair. And I feel like there should be some more meat in those meetings and looking forward to what we're doing for the upcoming year. So the piece about the work plan is really, I wanted to bring forth something to you as board members of where we anticipate spending our resources in the coming year. And I can talk more about that later. But every year and throughout the year, Jennifer knows, we have to, we have performance measures that we're measured against with OBM, because that's where the general fund funding comes from. And we have to anticipate, you know, how many regional plans, how many local plans. There's a lot of this that we should go back and forth with OBM. But that's not something you see. And so I think it's probably good that we share that information with you as well. And so there will be that. And then also, again, the budget, where we stand going into the year. You don't approve the budget, that's approved by council, but letting you know at the beginning that we're organizationally, what budget we have to work with for the coming year. So I don't think I have any other slides on this, but we can pull it up if we need to. I just wanted to give people the opportunity to ask any questions or look at specific sections if there were questions on anything.
Anybody have comments, questions?
Just one question, maybe in here, just, I haven't found it. And there was, it looked like we took out the language in 5.04 about meaning alternates? Sort of the process to mean alternate?
Yes.
The reference is now the code, and maybe that's where it is. But I assume you still have to disclose that we have an alternate if someone's sitting in.
Yeah, and I'll let Wesley speak to this too. But again, you're right, that was already, it's in the code, and so we didn't want to rewrite the words that were in there. And the way that the code really does state is that alternates have to be approved in the same manner in which the board member is approved. And we've got a case in point right here with Assistant Director, Marka, interim director for the city of Cleveland. So typically, this board has not required board members to have alternates beyond the county council appointments and the city of Cleveland. If you can't come to a meeting, it's okay. You know, we don't say you have to be at every meeting or you're, you're out. And so it does, it really does, in the code, it doesn't specify only Cleveland necessarily gets an alternate. But what has to happen is, so for Mayor Bibb, ideally, what would have happened is we had Mayor Bibb's reappointment letter. And with that, at the same time, we had the designation of an alternate that then went to council, so that his alternate was approved by council at the same time his reappointment was. So Wesley, I don't know if that, is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, the one other thing that we had in mind with the bylaws as a whole is to avoid potential conflict between what's in the bylaws and what the county ordinances say and what the revised code says. And so that's why we, as much as we can, refer to the ordinance and the revised code.
Because if it changes, but then we don't catch those changes in the language of our bylaws, then we're out of step with the ordinance. The other thing we found, which was really interesting, which I think it's in this section, there is a section 206.12, I think it is, we're from the county side, county council side, and it was about the makeup of the board. It then pointed back to our bylaws, and our bylaws pointed back to 206.12. So we had to go all the way back to 1989 and reference that resolution that said the planning commission board members will be made up of, they use the emergency planning regions, will be used to distinguish the regions for the planning commission. And here are how the board seats were named. So we were going like this within the bylaws, which obviously is not ideal. So I think we fixed that in this now. And you will see, you know, the executive director duties or powers, it's in section 802. So what's referred to this in this contract changes is the resolution that was just approved today for the contracting authority. So it would, obviously, if it didn't get passed, it would come out. But so that is also attached in the appendix, because now that's changed from the 1990 authority that was previously established.
Anybody else have any comments, questions, thoughts?
Just wondering on the 501, 5.01. So there was a lot of strike throughs. I know you stated that we're, we're listed somewhere that we're, county council's supposed to sit on this board. Why was this strike through?
Because it refers out to 206.12 of the county code, which I don't know which appendix that's in, but it outlines this appendix E. I don't know, there's not page numbers on this yet.
But it's in there.
It's in there. It, it literally, so all the text from 206.12 is exactly what was in our bylaws before. But I think to Wes's point, we run the risk if something changes with that 206.12, if it's amended, then we've got to amend our language, where if we just refer back to that, we'll just have to keep track if that is further amended or something changes, we would change that reference. But it is, it's, it was verbatim the text that was in 206.12.
It really helps with housekeeping. If you refer back, then you don't have to keep changing and getting caught with the answer.
Okay, so in regards to process then, so this is the, the public notification. And then our next meeting is scheduled for?
We've got a tentative one in January, Doc, that we'll need it. But February 13th is our organizational meeting where I just say this and come back.
You should be able to move on it. Okay.
So if you find anything else in here between now and February, please take the time and send me a note and, you know, write up something, mark it up, send it over to me, and we'll make sure we address it. I know we've got to go through a fine-tooth comb as we clean up the version, but I want to make sure you saw the various changes that are being recommended.
Appreciate everyone's hard work on this, Mayor. Bless.
Thank you, thank you.
Want more comments on there?
Yes, I just have on page 19 here, 7.02. Just, I thought maybe that needed to be updated, CCPC.
Yep, I've got my highlights in here of ones I missed.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll go back and do a search and find. I found a few on a couple different pages that I missed, so we'll make sure we update that. Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing further on that, we'll move on to the director's report.
Okay. Okay. So good news. Just a few things I want to highlight, and we'll try and wrap this up so that, remember, you have to stay for Sally Weiss' meeting. But wanted to do kudos corner, which I haven't done a lot lately, but we've got some really exciting news lately. Both Maureen Riley and Paul Triolo passed their AICP exam. It was supposed to be a week ago Saturday, and then the snowstorm happened, and so the test was canceled. They found out the night before after months and months of studying. Luckily, there was some quick turning by APA, and they got new dates. And so they just passed it, which is fantastic. So our entire planning team, minus one staff member in that planning services section, are all AICP certified, which I think is outstanding for a staff of our size, that we've got that kind of credentialing. So very excited for them. Also, Liam Levito, our GIS whiz on our team, he was previously a GIS technician and IT GIS, enterprise GIS, posted a position for a GIS analyst. And he looked at it and said, I, I do all of this and probably more. And so we had a job audit situation, discussion with HR and PRC, because we didn't have anything between a GIS technician and a GIS manager available to us at Planning Commission. So we went through the PRC. So it went through the PRC board, it went to county council, and the GIS analyst position was opened up to County Planning Commission as well now. And so he will become a GIS analyst. So very excited for him. He is just kind of doing a lot with mapping and a lot with a lot of our partners on data integrity and other things. Very excited for him. And just yesterday, I think, or the day before, we just found out that we are received an award of excellence in the category of best practices for our single family zoning work. This is by the APA County Planning Division and the National Association of County Planners. So really excited about that. It was really wonderful to hear. They also encourage us to submit for the national award. So they said they would help us do that. So they sent us a press release that I've shared with the upstairs communications team and just to make sure that we get the recognition here locally too. So fantastic team that's worked on this. And I know we've done work in South Euclid and Euclid on single family zoning and others. And so I just, it goes back to that best practices in parking. I mean, this was kind of how all that started with the single family zoning work. So it's nice to see the reward there at the end. So we'll be working with Jennifer Kuzma also for suburbs, just to get more news out to folks. So and then just this week, Channel 19, we did a interview on Cleveland Heights ADU. It was one of those where there was a voicemail that was left at 6:00 PM. And by 8:30 AM, they were calling back saying we need to do this interview. I said, sure, I have time, we want to talk. They're like, actually, we're outside the building, can you come downstairs? So if anybody saw it, it was on the news the other day, like afternoon news. And so there's an article about Cleveland Heights ADU, the work that we're doing there. Eric Zamp from Cleveland Heights was also interviewed. So, you know, and it goes back to the city hired us to work on the ADU piece. And they said, look, we don't want this just to be for Cleveland Heights. We want what you do to then be applicable to other communities. And so it's been a really great relationship with Cleveland Heights on that. And then also I got to be a guest on Brian Zimmerman's podcast. Tales and Trails at the Metro Park started. I'm like, there's nothing this man cannot do, but it was super fun. And so that was just a nice way, it's kind of making its way through LinkedIn and other things. It kind of happened and there was a little news and then there was nothing. But it was a full-on studio, corporate college, it was a lot of fun. So, so that was fun. And then board appointments. Thank you to all of you who agreed to continue on with us. Mayor Orkut, Mayor Gallo, and Mayor Bibb. I'm sure most of you know, but Director Wong from Cleveland Heights has left the city and she is going to the Cleveland Foundation. And so Marka Fields has been the assistant director at the City of Cleveland and Planning Commission. And she will be our alternate going forward. It's going to go to council, I hope in January, to get her approved as the alternate. So she's here, but she cannot vote today. So that's kind of the backstory on the alternate situation. So welcome, Marka. And then county council, I know I've already talked to staff upstairs for appointments because Councilman Simon and Conwell, your terms end this year. So I've been making sure it's on their radar for Council, for Council President Jones to do his appointment 25 so that we have you guys situated for our organizational meeting. And then just quickly, a couple project updates. Yesterday, we had an amazing meeting, East 22nd Street Small Area Plan that we are doing in partnership with the City of Cleveland. I don't know how many, I think we had every stakeholder in this area minus two or three. It was a two-hour workshop. It was fantastic, everyone rolling up their sleeves, talking to people that they needed to talk to, really convening big stakeholders in the same room and talking about visioning and what we want to make sure we're retaining there, what we need to reimagine there and all the different plans that are happening. So it was really a great, a great meeting yesterday. And I think the hard part's going to be like, what comes next? Everyone's like, well, what's next and who's doing it? And so, so we don't know yet, but it was a really good meeting. We did brief Council President Jones last week, so he was aware. Given this is a lot of, you know, his stakeholders too, Councilman Starr was there, so it was really great. And a couple weeks ago, we briefed the City of Cleveland Chief and Directors too, so that they know. And again, this is not just in planning, this is HHS, this is so many different varieties of departments that, you know, county owns property, that everyone owns property and provides service to the residents. And I know there's continued coordination with Randy Carney and thinking about intervention and Center Neighborhood Family Practice and the centers going in there. So just a lot of moving parts. But it's, it's the big thing that we've, you know, got our eyes on now is timing of demolition. You know, the Juvenile Justice Center is there and received brownfield dollars. That is like the front door to Cedar Estates. And we're working very closely with CMHA to make sure that as they start relocating folks to redevelop that area, we're timing it right with demolition so that it's not impacting residents, you know, unnecessarily while they're there, living there.
If I can, I'm not sure everybody knows this, you know, if you could just give a
Sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
summary of what, for everybody's benefit. I don't, I'm not sure everybody has the details.
Yeah, sure.
It's changed so much so often, so.
Right, right. So this is really going all the way from the Woolstein Center down to Broadway, the post office. And what we found was that there was no one group convening all these stakeholders. The changes that have been happening with St. Vincent's, the Sisters of Charity, they've got slated demolition projects. CMHA is looking to redevelop Cedar Estates, but their model really is that they relocate people in other CMHA housing. They've done this for Wood Hill. And then they give those folks who lived there previously the first rate of reentry into a new home in this area. The Juvenile Justice Center project, you know, coming down, the Interbell project happening there, which is going to slice off a portion of the county's property there. We've got William Pat Day, Myrtis Taylor, Scholar House, Tri-C, everyone has plans. We've talked to even Scouting America, you know, that's there and they want to expand. And one thing we've heard is, you know, I need a commercial kitchen, I need a commercial kitchen, I need a commercial kitchen. Oh, I didn't know they had a commercial kitchen. I mean, so some of this where there really are feeding the needy and taking care of our most vulnerable residents, you know, whether it's drug and alcohol addiction, Rosary Hall. There's just so many pieces that are really intertwined, the library. And how do we really make sure that we're doing this so that it feels like a neighborhood and a group of assets rather than just institutions on East 22nd and residential, kind of more residential side on East 30th. Obviously, there's other big news with, you know, the Slavic Village Connector, which is going to come alongside Broadway and end right at East 14. So, you know, Cleveland State's really trying to figure out, how do we get our students from the north down to the south to get on these trails and get, you know, take care of, take advantage of some of these assets? The highway divides this neighborhood, you know, and it's like in multiple different ways. And then, you know, there's been discussions about potential of extending scenic valley railroad from the national park all the way up to downtown. And they're looking at potentially this area as well as a terminus. There's the pending potential women's soccer stadium down there in the corner there to the southwest. And so there are no shortage of moving pieces in here. I guess the one thing that's not moving is the post office, which that's like 30 acres of land right there. And it would just be such a huge opportunity. But we did do an interview with them and they have no plans, but they said, hey, if you want to build us a facility somewhere, we'll move, you know? But it's, it's the first time all these folks have been like in the room together, talking about what they're doing and talking about the timing. You know, the St. Vincent's closing really had a big impact on the residents there who, you know, might not be able to get somewhere else so closely. And so knowing that the centers are coming in and Neighborhood Family Practice are coming in, it's like starting to put those pieces back together. And Sisters of Charity are really dedicated to keeping Rosary Hall there and their food service, you know, that they provide. And they are building a religious women's archive facility. They're going to build a new building there where it's religious orders from, I don't know how many different groups, that they want to have a building that not only provides services, but also has an archive library there of religious artifacts and other things. So it's like the things you just don't hear about are happening there, so.
Would that be located?
It's part of, I think up by, I just got their drawings. I feel like it's either up by the centers part and like the part of that parking lot or somewhere over by Neighborhood Family Practice. They really want to continue to be part of the neighborhood. They didn't want to just go somewhere and be somewhere by itself. And so they really want to be, continue to play an integral part here. But they are, you know, St. Vincent's, I don't think exists now, it's Sisters of Charity Health Systems or something. But, you know, there are buildings that have been slated for demolition. And so now it's just trying to figure out the timing of all of that, so. Yeah, more to come. Okay, and then real quickly, I know we've talked about TOD so many times. But we did put out a survey in partnership with GCRTA to really try to get from developers, what, what is holding back? What are you, you know, what's holding you back from doing TOD type work in Cuyahoga County? Because we're not seeing enough that, as we should be. We've got top three barriers identified and, you know, kind of cumbersome processes and lack of incentives to do things. But we had, you know, 64 total respondents. I think 30 of the developers who responded said, you know, we want to talk, we want to keep talking about this. So we've had conversations with Department of Development, Sarah Parks Jackson's team and Housing Community Development and, you know, W part of the Integrated Development and Annie as Transportation Advisor. What can we do as a county and working with other agencies to really start helping figure out what's the holdup and how we can maybe make things go smoother? And not to say we have to come up with this brand new fund, but, you know, there are programs that development has where they do types of loans and things and where can we start trying to get TOD in the front of it? And I think today, you know, as we keep hearing about these projects and redevelopment of older buildings and things that are close to the street and give people an opportunity to take transit instead of having a car along with the parking conversations. It's really something we want to take to the next level in 2025. I mean, we've been working on zoning and best practices and it's going to take a long time for us to get through zoning in 59 communities to make it friendly to TOD. But we looked at what building permits were polled in 2022. And I think in Cuyahoga County for multifamily building permits, there was 623 only. Compare that with Franklin County in the same time period, there were 6,238. So we are ranking like 10 out of 11 with our peer metros and who are really doing work to advance TOD in the communities. And so we're going to keep trying to chip away at this. And we're going to have a meeting with some of the folks upstairs, you know, in early January and then try to get together with a bunch of the developers and start really working, working this and knocking down some barriers, so. Okay. In your packet, it's new from the packet you sent out. We had to change one of the dates. The board meeting, that is a draft list, but I wanted to make sure you had it so you can start putting them on your calendars. It'll be officially voted on at the organizational meeting on February 13th. And then just to quickly talk about that work plan, which again is something we haven't done in the past, but to introduce something at the organizational meeting that really identifies the priorities for our agency initiatives that we're going to continue to work on. We're rebranding our planning grants as Community Planning Services Program because it's been very confusing because it's called a grant, but it's not a grant. It's actually us providing professional services to communities. So we wanted to clear up some of that. It might get left, but we're coming up on the 10 years of the program next year. And so we're going to kind of have a campaign about that, what we've seen, what we've done, where we're going, how we can continue to improve it. And so really, and again, Planning Commission's way older than that, but that program was established 10 years ago. So it's pretty exciting to see all the different work that we've done. And again, that work plan, just like I said, and again, thank you for your vote of confidence on the, you know, contracting authority because I think it will help us better align our capacities with not starting all new projects at one time. And I really believe in defining metrics for ourselves as an agency to make sure we're measuring our success. And so I see that work plan being brought to you, you know, can be adopted, approved or just information and then quarterly bringing that back and talking about the performance and where we're at with our anticipated tasks, so.
Any comments, questions? Okay. Is that it, Mayor?
That is it.
All right, anything in the old business column? Nothing in the new business? I'm going to make a motion to adjourn so we can jump back into the next meeting.
Yeah.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to thank all of you for your time, your support this year. And I hope you've had wonderful holidays with your family and friends. And it's been a great year, so thank you. Doc, do you want to sit up here? I'm like, I always feel bad, I shouldn't still be sitting here. I'll leave the clicker for you.
Okay. So I'm going to call the Solid Waste Policy Committee meeting to order for December 12th, 2024. And then can we call a roll, please?
Mayor Burke.
Here.
Councilperson Conwell.
Present.
Mayor Bailey Jones. Director Dever.
Here.
Mayor Gallo.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Orkut.
Here.
Councilperson Sine. Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here.
Tim Webber.
Here.
Michelle Wilhel.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thanks so much. Okay, I'll turn it over to the bathroom.
Thank you, and I'll make it brief because I know we're well beyond an hour. So today, we're just going to review a couple of points. You all have been journeying with us on our update of the current solid waste management plan. So we are going to review the OEPAs non-binding advisory comments that we received with you. And then we will briefly talk about what our next steps are, which will incorporate each of your communities. So I wanted to go over those so you can get those dates on your calendar. As anticipated, we did receive right on schedule from the Ohio EPA their non-binding advisory comments. And what those are is you had approved the district submitting to the OEPA the first draft of the new solid waste plan. They had 45 days to review that document and respond to us with comments, suggestions, and, you know, any changes they wish to see. So this is the letter that we received. And Mr. Dever received a copy also as the head of our policy committee. I wanted to share this with you because we received only a few pages worth of comments and this was the most exciting one, which that they really liked our plan. So we were very pleased with that. We had put a great deal of work with staff and our consulting team into this document, hoping that we would get very few comments back from them. So I wanted to share that with you. The few comments that we did receive back really were that they, that EPA had double counted items that because of our very thorough checking and checking again when it comes to the surveys that we sent out to processors and communities and businesses, we always make sure that things aren't double counted and that, you know, the numbers are reflected correctly. So it was a bit fun to let them know that they had some double counted numbers in there, so. So we were able to correct those and move on. So the document that you had approved still stands as is because we really didn't receive any significant corrections to that document. I did want to review with you quickly, again, just to remind you what the programs and priorities are in this current plan. So we're maintaining all of our existing programs. We did meet earlier this year in January with the service directors from your communities and asked them to be honest with us as to sharing, what do you like about us? What don't you like about us and what would you like to see changed? And they were very frank, as they are apt to be. And they said, well, the first thing is we need to see a little more money in your grant programs. Thank you inflation and, you know, just our money isn't going as far. So one of the things that we did incorporate into this update is additional money for our grant programs. We are going to be in this plan update revamping some of the eligible criteria so we can pursue or your communities can pursue more operationally oriented and, and program oriented activities, such as, you know, do you need containers for collecting cardboard for multifamily or, you know, does your community want to look at maybe purchasing a baler for compacting that cardboard and getting it to market or having it more easily picked up by a processor? We heard loud and clear that they do like our scrap tire roundup program, so we will be keeping that. They did let us know that our work with court, community They did let us know that our work with Court Community Services, we do hold a contract with them. They did want to be able to have direct contact with Court Community Services. And what Court Community Services, they have two teams that are in a constant rotation throughout the county, picking up scrap tires and illegal dumping and the rights of waves in your communities. And the service directors asked, could they please have the hotline to Court Community Services in the event that they encounter something that needs to be addressed before the usual rotation of Court Community Services would get back to them? So we've incorporated that in our new contract with Court Community Services. And the other thing that we had heard from the services directors is they're interested in having the district help develop more drop-off program infrastructure for multifamily or just within the different, just within your communities. And I'm going to point to our pumpkin collection program, which we piloted last year in three locations. This year, we expanded to ten. We did not choose ourselves as a location because our location at the office wasn't used. So we really went from two locations to ten. And in 2023, we had collected around seven point five tons worth of compost for, or excuse me, pumpkins for composting. This year, we collected eighteen point two tons at our ten locations, all of which went for, I know, went for composting. That's a great diversion. We got wonderful feedback from your communities and have already started the list of your communities that want to participate in next year's program. So in this plan, we have increased the money from ten thousand dollars to twenty thousand for those types of programs, whether they may be seasonal or are more permanent. Those were the kinds of things that the service directors wanted to see, something that your residents could take advantage of, but we somewhat manage, so it's not a burden on them. So those are the programmatic changes based on the priorities that we heard coming from your communities. The budget is going to remain pretty much the same. On the revenue side, we are currently at two dollars per ton as a generation fee. And a generation fee is charged on every ton of garbage that is disposed someplace in the state of Ohio. And we are going to maintain that fee through, at least through, until we go to update this again in another five to six years. We also are going to maintain a hundred and eighty days' worth of an operating balance in our fund balance. We want to make sure that we have that type of money set aside, goodness forbid, you know, for any kind of emergencies, capital improvements. You know, our building is sound, but just in case anything were to go sideways there, our current fund balance sits at over four million dollars, so we are in a good position. And in the upcoming years of the plan, we're looking at expenditures of being around two point four with revenue coming in at about two point five million. So, you know, we may in future years, because we did build into our budget escalators for inflation, depending on the line item, we have inflation escalators between one and three percent. So we just, you know, we're trying to be very realistic. We kept revenue very static, to be conservative, and increased the cost of expenditures. And I do want to talk about the schedule because this is where we are going to need your help on the community level. So on here, you can see, you know, we are here today reviewing the NBOs from the Ohio EPA. We don't really have any updates to make to the plan, which is great, but we did build into our schedule a buffer there. Statutorily, we do need to conduct a public comment period. Publish that, run the public comment period for thirty days. We currently are looking at kicking off the public comment period on February the thirteenth, and then that will run for thirty days. We will be placing a notice on our website. We also place it with the Plain Dealer, which will be both online and in print. Each of your communities will be receiving correspondence from us, kind of reviewing this schedule, saying, when is the public comment period? At the conclusion of the public comment period, statutorily, we then have to conduct a public hearing. So we have statutorily fifteen days from the end of the public comment period to conduct a public hearing. So we'll be sharing that with all of your communities. Obviously, you don't need to come to a public comment period or a public hearing. If you need to reach out, please do so via email or phone if, you know, as you're reviewing the plan, you want to discuss something or have a recommendation. Both of these activities allows, you know, whether your residents or communities or businesses, which are generators of solid waste, to comment on where we're taking the district during this next five years of our plan. And, you know, we note things, and if there are any changes at the conclusion of the public hearing, then as you can see on the schedule here, what we do is we will then incorporate those changes into the document. We will be back before you at the April meeting. So I believe that's April the tenth. We will be back here reviewing with you any changes that we receive, any feedback that we get through the public comment or public hearing. And we will, at that point, have for you that revised document with the recommendations in it. We will be asking you at that meeting to please adopt that final, final version because that will be the document then that goes out to ratification. And then our, once April tenth occurs, we really jump into, in early May, the ratification process. And I wanted to review with you what is involved in that. So there are some statutory things that are required for plan ratification. We will be sending to you in two different correspondences, a prototype of a resolution that you will need to take to your councils. It is required, each solid waste district, and this kind of goes over what we need to include in our plan, which we had just went over in the prior slides. But for ratification purposes, we need to have a vote from each of our fifty-nine communities. Most importantly, we need to procure a vote from the City of Cleveland, which is our largest political subdivision, and then we also need to procure affirmative votes totaling, inclusive of the City of Cleveland, totaling sixty percent of the district's population. And the thing that I want to stress to you is, according to the rules, if your community does not take action, that is, doesn't pass any legislation affirmatively or negatively, it unfortunately counts as a negative vote, a no vote. So it is important that everyone do, because this is going to fall over the summer, unfortunately or fortunately. And we know some of you have recesses. We know sometimes you, you know, reduce your schedules with council over the summer. So Jessica and I, in particular, will be reaching out to you frequently to see if, you know, if you would like us to come and speak before your councils prior to entertaining a piece of legislation for the plan. We're very happy to do that. Have car will travel, so. So that is really it. We then will, you know, convene before, in the fall, at the conclusion of that ninety-day ratification period, which will be in September, at which point we will present to you an actual tally of, you know, all the communities, all the populations, those that voted yes. Hopefully, we have no votes or no missed opportunity to vote, and if that calculates to sixty percent of the population inclusive of the City of Cleveland. After which then you certify those votes. We package all those lovely ordinance or resolutions up and the final document of the plan, and we send it to the EPA for them to review one last time, and then hopefully put their stamp on approval early in 2026. So hard to believe, but 2025 will fly by before we know it, and we just wanted to let you know that we will be probably seeing a lot of you or you a lot of us during 2025, and we look forward to answering any questions that you have. And do keep an eye out for the packages that we will be sending you that contain the notification for public comment and the public hearing as well as the prototype for the resolutions.
So my question is, is when do you want to come to mayors and managers?
Well, that is actually, that is on our list. Jessica and I were, we had a more extensive list than what we shared with you, but working as, working all that, so yes, we would like very much to come to mayors and managers probably during the winter, and so.
Any other comments?
Ratification process, the reason you're doing this, it takes every five years? It's every five years?
Correct, yes. Yeah, but our plan.
New to me.
Our plan requires us to have, to document a planning period of fifteen years, but it's rolling because every five years we have to update it. So if we get approval in twenty, early 2026, we will have to then, in the latter part of, it's hard to believe, 2030, begin that update process again. So, yeah, so every five years, it's, it's a good time.
I have one other question, the generation fee. How was the last time this was raised?
This was raised in the beginning of 2023, and prior to that, it hadn't been raised since, Jessica?
Two thousand and six or seven.
Yeah, so overall in the state, we have one of the lowest generation fees in the state. We're a staff of seven of us, including myself, and, you know, we're charged with trying to, you know, divert as much material from landfills as possible, so. We may be small, but we're moving.
What goes into the process of raising?
We can't do that except through the plan process. So the last plan that occurred five years ago, my predecessor, in doing their budget, they had anticipated that they would have to raise the generation fee to, you know, inflation and the fact that, you know, they had heard at that point from the public and the service directors that they wanted some expansion of programming. So that necessitated raising the generation fee, and it went from a dollar fifty to two dollars per ton two years ago. So they had scheduled it in the context of the plan that we're currently under, but several years after the beginning of the plan, so folks had an opportunity to get their budgets in line. And so during, for this five-year cycle, we are not planning on raising that.
Is it, are you limited if you make this commitment, if you cannot, or are you just not planning on?
So passing a generation fee is, is really going through ratification again. So if we, you know, goodness forbid, for example, our building were to burn to the ground and insurance didn't cover it, and we needed to look at increasing our revenue stream, we can't statutorily do that. We can do it outside of the confines of the plan, but it's its own entire ratification process. So we would have to publicize it, you know, have a public hearing, send it out to you, and conduct a vote. And actually, at that point, we need seventy-five percent approval of the population inclusive of the City of Cleveland versus if you do it within the construct of the plan because you're doing like we have this past year and have been in front of you a great deal and getting the message out, it only requires sixty. So typically, people don't like to do that, so we look very seriously at the budget to make sure that we would be whole, you know, through this next five-year period.
Is there a suggestion to raise the fee? I'm just curious.
I just asked the question. You know, right now, you know, we're, we're good, you're good on budgets, but just looking ahead and how other departments look ahead, of course, see if things go up.
Right, and, you know, that's why, you know, I mean, we update every five years. We don't want to, I'm not going to sit here and tell you, oh, no, for the next fifteen, we'll never raise the generation fee. We know that during the confines of this plan, we don't have to, you know, if we hear from you communities that, for example, you want us to double the amount of grants that we, you know, provide communities, we're going to have to look at that in the next plan already, right, so.
So, but it's also market-driven, global market factors? Which we saw an increase in the generation fee because of COVID, recycling, what commented, and so it shifts according to the global market, so that impacts
Right.
the decisions we've made over the last ten years.
And we've taken a rather conservative look at the next five years. We, because of changes in market, we're going to have a change of presidency, we wanted to expand programs, but not ridiculously so because that's a future we just simply can't predict. And there could be, you know, recycling is, it's a global market, as Councilwoman Simon mentioned. Although, knock on wood, after the China sword and after the pandemic, we have really increased our domestic recycling capacity, which is terrific, so that leaves us a little more insulated. But, you know, unfortunately, my crystal ball is no better than anyone else's for predicting, you know, what may happen in the next five years. So we just tried to remain kind of expanding a bit, but not, I think, overboard, so.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I just, so when we posted the report, we were number five in the county, you know, and everybody in front of us were little communities. Quite a few people, and they send the next magazine in South Uggod, they're like, these are all little cities and we're the largest ones, we need to move up. And I was like, okay, but if you're going to, you know, we really need all of you to get out there. So it's going to be interesting to me to see where we go in the next year or two as a community because they really took it seriously, like at the block parties and that. I was very surprised. I think that posting that on the city website, they're like, oh, we're number five, and we're the biggest of, they're all these villages, they're villages, and I didn't realize it myself. So, you know, we're, for us, we're really looking to see if our residents are going to buy into this even more than what they already have.
Well, I would encourage all of you, our 2025 grants are posted on our website, and we always try and encourage the service directors, you know, think about, you know, maybe looking at what your current programming is, what use our grant money for, what can you do to help, in that case, move your needle to either increase, you know, the recycling or increase your yard waste collection, you know, maybe venture into that food waste composting area? And, and it was interesting because we brought that up at our meeting with them in January, and most of the service directors were like, oh, no, I just don't want that mess, blah, blah, blah. But they, but really, the pumpkin collection program is just that, you know, you know, it's, they were undecorated pumpkins that we collected, and it's going for food waste composting. So we were hoping to make an example of that, that it wasn't the ooey-gooey mess that I think many of them had anticipated, and so.
I want to challenge the mayors here. I want to use a grant for an audit of part of your community because even though these numbers might look good when you get into the weeds of the, you know, the curbside, people are putting everything but the kitchen sink still into their, their recycling bin, and it's something I think we really need to drill down on. So part of the grant opportunity will be to do an audit. It's a happy, positive program. I remember you were concerned that it was, people would be chastised or, you know, it's more just like smiley face if you do it right, and maybe a little frown if you don't with stickers, and we had kids from, who did the audit for the one group?
Was it Hawking?
We had, who did the audit? They were students, Brooklyn, but there were, who did the actual audit, the work on the ground? College and high school students. College and high school students. We get to intern. So mayors here, if anybody's interested, please come see us, and I want to really start drilling down on education of what goes in those bins.
I'm telling you, also invite them out. We had a great one at our South Uggod Community Center where they came out and presented, and, you know, they actually show pictures that, of that, the recycling really goes, and, you know, then they showed how, you know, even the envelopes with the And, and, you know, then they showed how, you know, even the envelopes with the windows, how they spin it, and then you'll see the, that little plastic stuff on the top and everything. And, you know, I think that really like got people that decided about it. It was pretty int, I mean, I just kind of sat back and watched. It was pretty interesting to see.
People want to do the right thing, but everything has changed so much. You know, they were looking at the, the triangles on plastic, is it a six, a five? Doesn't matter anymore. This isn't a bottle and jug or, you know, whatever, right? So it changes so quickly, so, um.
So it doesn't matter on the numbers anymore?
No.
No, it, um, so we, we encourage people to look at the shape.
Well, shape.
And we could, and, and please do. One, one of the things that, you know, we do is we have, um, two educators plus myself. You know, we can come out and, you know, conduct presentations. Plastics in particular are constantly evolving. And, um, and now there's a whole new thing called advanced recycling, which is, is, is going to be interesting watching that because it's kind of reverse refining, you know, because plastics made from, um, oil. So, yes, we would love to come, you know, and we love to talk trash, so we seem, everybody else likes to hear about it, so.
You know, I was just going to say, I've never understood why Kimball, Republic, Waste Management, why don't they just put it on the bins? Like, on the top of, you know, put a little little thing, here's what can go in here.
Changes all the time, that's why.
It doesn't change, I mean, like, Republic, um, I mean, it was the same way they did, just recently added the tubs, but it was the same pretty much for at least five years.
Yeah. And it, it is, the reason they're not doing the, the pre-printed integrated is because it is changing. I mean, Rumkey, for example, in the last three years, they've added a new material each of the last three years.
Oh, well, then that is.
And so, and, and not everybody is, I mean, because these are private companies, it's their investment for their recycling facility. Some, some are more agile and eager to increase what can be recycled than others, but it's a market, so. But yes, we'd love to come and talk to you.
But you get the grant, and for the grant, we did, uh, magnets, circle ones. And then we did the cards that we, we pass out at our Memorial Day parade. Because I always have a picnic, so that's kind of the kickoff. So, you know, a lot of people will have those magnets for those cards, you know?
Magnets are great, you put them on the fridge, it's in the kitchen, so you're, you, that's usually where you're handling something.
And you don't have to pay for them if you get the grant.
Right.
Now, the recycling facilities, we just went through an audit. We take a packer full of waste and you run it through their plant and tell us how efficient we are or what penalties, uh, what they're going to pay us for the recycling. We use that as a barometer, we do a spot check to make sure they're in compliance. So there's a lot of different mechanisms that they're using to make sure, maintain a certain level of efficiency.
Well, and, and, you know, recycling right at the curb follows all the way out the supply chain. Because if it's good, then they can capture more. They can broker cleaner material, it gets a higher value at market, which helps drive down the processing costs, so it's just.
That's what we went through.
And, you know, a lot of us are using the cans for the burn, like in our, in our fire department. It's big for people to bring their cans there, so, other than that.
Ed, did you have a comment?
No, I just wanted to ask if before we adjourn, you want to approve the minutes from the August eight?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I didn't want us to.
That, that would probably be a good idea.
For the planning, um, mostly for.
Second. Motion to approve the minutes from the, what was the date again? Sorry, the October seventh meeting? And it was seconded by Mayor Burke? Any other further comments, questions? All those who favor say aye. Aye, those who oppose, that motion carries. Okay, any, anything else?
I hope you all have a great holiday season.
Thanks.
You know, don't, you know, please, we would love to come talk to you, so.
Thanks, Beth, Jessica, Marie. Great, appreciate the work you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we stand adjourned.